...to the flag of the United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Chongley. Here.
Trustee Gisanda.
Here.
Trustee Chongley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett Wilton-Lay. Mayor Martin.
Here.
Motion to approve meetings or the minutes of previous meeting? I make a motion to approve one in both quarters. Two separate. The organizational meeting first? You want separate or together?
That's up to you.
Let's do them together. Okay. Make a motion to approve both the organizational meeting on April 5th and also the regular board meeting minutes on April 5th. One second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any corrections? Have a little call back please.
Trustee Chongley. Hi. Trustee Gisanda.
Aye.
Trustee Chongley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
All right, before we begin the presentation of Petitioners' Communications Notices, general question period, members of the four members of the community will have the second reading of the Guidelines for Public Comment. Folks shall be allowed to speak only during the public comment period of the meeting or at such other time as the majority of the board shall allow. Speakers must be recognized by the proceeding officer. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization of any. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during the remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification of information. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any member thereof. Speakers shall observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communications. Written communications shall be delivered to the clerk treasurer or their designee. There, we don't have to read that one again. So, petition, presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period for members of the community? Oh, all right, thank you. Mr. Tatro was not here. Code Enforcement, give my report. Really quite excited about the community guide that was suggested at our last board meeting. It's moving forward despite the weather. We have some land, the village's land down by the river is available. The fertilizer has been donated and delivered. As soon as it dries up a little bit, the plot will be tilled. We have someone who has volunteered to come down with a tractor and a tiller to till up the land and prepare it for planting. We're still looking for a topsoil donation if someone is so inclined. I would like to acknowledge Rachel Solory and Janet McFetrich for bringing this idea to the board and hopefully many village residents will get involved. If you are interested in getting involved, please call the village office at (298) 4152 and leave your name and phone number so we may contact you when an organizational meeting is announced in the next week or so. The planting season is upon us. Hydrant flushing has been completed. If you are experiencing any water issues, I know we had a couple of water main breaks that the Department of Public Works took care of very well, but if you are experiencing any issues, please give the village office a call so that they may be addressed. A couple of other issues. Spring pickup days, please be advised that spring pickup days in the village of Champlain shall be held on the following days. Thursday, May 12th, Friday, May 13th, Monday, May 23rd, Tuesday, May 24th. Please note, all brush no larger than one inch in diameter must be put in clear, in clear plastic bags. Brush must be reduced to fit completely into the clear plastic bags. No loose brush will be picked up. We don't have the facilities with the equipment to take care of it. All loose brush in any unmanageable bags due to weight or tearing will be left for the homeowner. We will continue to pick up leaves and lawn debris that must also be put in clear plastic bags. Please be sure no other debris is put into the bags, garbage, household waste, et cetera. All bags shall be put by the curbside by 7:00 a.m. on each of the scheduled days. The second notice, this is a notice, all residents of the village of Champlain with pools. Please be advised that residents who fill their swimming pools with more than 5,000 gallons of village water must, must call the village office first so that the corrected amount of gallons used to calculate the sewer credit can be verified by the Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works can be reached at (298) 864-94298415. Residents may call the village office if they have any questions or need further information. This is so that we can get an accurate reading on the water meters. Finally, I'd like to congratulate Jimmy Andres, Larry Sorrell, on their completion of the water certification course in Pottstown on April 20th. Mike's not here. But that is my report. Trustee Chongley?
I really have nothing to report, just to say.
Yeah. Trustee Gisanda?
Nothing to report just yet?
Trustee Chongley?
Yeah, it's been pretty quiet. Not much to report, but I do want to reiterate what you touched on, and I thank Larry and his crew for the quick response to the two water main breaks, and as always, I commend you guys. When you're needed, you jump in, take care of it, and it gets done professionally, so thank you very much. That's all I have.
Here. Report from the clerk treasurer, please.
Everyone has the April expense reports, and I have no question. Expenses are everyone.
We're nearing the end of the year, so.
So, yeah.
The expenses look very good.
Yeah, I know. The certainly made looks very nice.
Yeah. Motion to pay the work?
Make the motion.
We have a second.
Second motion.
Any discussion on the work?
Well, one question for Larry. The in-school equipment, Clark in-school equipment, is that for a PTO?
That's for a PTO for the sidewalk machine.
Thanks. That's what I thought, but that's all I have.
I have one for Larry, I can't see if I can find it here right away, but it deals with nozzles and a hose.
It's under, yeah, the water pump.
Pumper, pumper and hose nozzles.
Oh, that, the pumper and hose nozzle, that's for them fire hydrants that they, we had to take the caps off, and they were stripped, and that's what it's under.
Oh, okay.
In fact, I got them in, and they replaced a couple of them already.
Okay, good.
That's from broken fire hydrants.
And the new, the new bands came in? Are they okay?
I've got two, and I have three on order.
Okay, and the pump will be in?
And the pump, yes. The pump and motor.
Then we can start moving some of them around, rebuilding what we need to refix, or fix and do whatever we need to do there. Okay, any other discussion on the work? Since we're expanding funds, I'll have a little poll though.
Trustee Chongley. Aye. Trustee Gisanda.
Aye.
Trustee Chongley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Anything else on the financial side?
No, we're gonna have to have a few transfers, but we might have a few struggling bills. We'll have a meeting probably last week of the month to do our transfers for the end of the year. Both books out.
Yeah, I have that as a, I have that as a proposal under the business. Correspondents, please.
How about where's your port?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mrs. Sorrell.
It's all right.
Where is your port?
You have my work log in front of us. There were some bags out there, we picked them up due to the rain and stuff, so they're not so heavy, and we do have to pick them up. We work inside the road, and like Mayor Martin said, we had two water main breaks, and we did them both under pressure so we didn't have to use any groundwater, any extra sample and stuff, so that was all what we done with. Had to flush the hydrant on the end after. We're just going to, as soon as it dries up, I got a couple of small sidewalks up down the street, we're sweeping them. Kind of get everything ready for the end of the month before we took some hydrants and stuff, added the parts.
The annual water report was good?
The annual water report, yes. We still have some to hand out, but decided the villages don't hand it out, so. And our, our water consumption went from 32% down to 10%, down, 10, 11%. Twenty-nine million gallons down to nine million gallons.
A little under 10.
Yeah.
That's good, sounds real good.
Keep track.
Did, did you, okay, did GSA give you a date to flushing?
I called GSA, and I told them that they were gonna flush, they had to flush more into that line, because we do it in sections and in booths.
Right.
And they called me back, and they told me that they weren't flushing. So I told them when they were gonna flush, they need to let me know.
Okay. Does that have an impact on us if they don't flush?
No, because we flush right to the end of the line, so. But if they do flush, we're gonna get dirty water, you know, because they've not pulled it the other way. So we have to flush, how do you do it all?
Interesting, the only way they don't want to fight, what, hydrants, right?
Yeah.
Anything else, man?
That's it.
Oh, we get it.
Correspondence from Utica Mutual Insurance regarding accident on Church Street on February 10th, 2011. Letters to Jason O'Connell from Code's Officer Tatro regarding his property at 93 Church Street. Letters to Catherine Gouly regarding her sewer credit. Correspondence regarding JCO golf tournament. Quote, clean water tank from preferred tank and tower. Correspondence from the state EFC regarding water meter grant that was not approved. Correspondence from Town of Champlain Court to Attorney Marshall regarding trial people versus Gary Clark. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding their annual report.
Any comments, discussion on the correspondence? Under old business, GSA meter, as far as I know, there's been no movement by the town to form a water district here. GSA meter will have to be part of that new district. And a meter pit, put in a meter pit anyway, won't we?
It all has to be in your design and approved by the health department.
The water sewer contract with the Town of Champlain, you've been copied with the updated draft of the water and sewer, water and wastewater contracts that we have developed that's been sorely needed for a long period of time. I know that you haven't had time to digest all of the material that's in there, so we'll table, if it's okay, we'll table that one until the June meeting so that we can vote on our approval or disapproval if adjustments, if you feel that adjustments need to be made. And then the town will vote whether or not to accept this contract, and then we can have a signing party, get together, and I can get together with the town supervisor, and we can sign the, sign the contracts, which will be in effect until 2014. We have been operating on a year-to-year contract for the last few years. I think this new contract takes care of the needs of the town and the village, and I think it's, with cooperation with the town, we're very good about sitting down and discussing the needs and addressing the needs of, of the town and the village, and our number one, our number one objective here is to protect the village's interest with this contract. So, we'll table that, give you a chance to, to look it over, and then after June's meeting, we will address that. Any other old business? Under new business, we have a couple items listed here, and I've added a few more. Changing the monthly date of the village board meetings. Like to have a motion to discuss this, please.
I'll raise a motion to change the monthly village board meeting from the first Tuesday of the month as it currently is to the second Monday of each month.
6:30?
At 6:30, yeah.
Have a second? Have a second? Do we have any discussion on this? I think it's, I think it's a good change, keep everybody involved.
Yeah.
Change in work schedules dictate that we go back to our original meeting dates so that we can have a full board participation. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries? This is unusual. Would you like to give a report?
I would, and I apologize, sorry. It's good that we're moving the meeting Tuesdays, very difficult for me. I just wanted to remind people, and someone may have already done that earlier in the meeting, so if you did, I apologize, when you go to fill your swimming pool this year, you need to call the village office first. Because I said, take the cover off and let this rain fill your pool, you probably won't need to waste the water anyway. And a reminder that this Saturday is a fun day at the town hall from 9:00 to 4:00, which will have pig roast, cotton candy, silent auction, bouncing house, snow cones, pie throwing at the town trustees, so that might be really fun for some folks to come on out and participate in. And they're looking to make this an annual event, making it a community, which would be kind of fun to do. The proceeds of this is going to the benefit to Save St. Mary's School. St. Mary's has been saved. We are more than thrilled and excited that we have already broken the $80,000 range so that we'll remain still part of our community in history, so we're very excited about that. A lot, a lot of people have worked very hard at that from all over, and I thank everyone who has come out and shown the support from all religious backgrounds. Our community really loves this school and what it stands for, and it really showed with everybody stepping up, so it's really kind of cool. So, on Saturday, it's gonna start with a walk from Ross's Point all the way to the town hall in support of St. Mary's, which would be pretty kind of awesome, hopefully. It won't be raining, it would be cool to see everybody coming down Route 11. Dangerous, however, that's the route that was chosen, so it'll be kind of cool to see. But fun day, pig roast, I mean, that's what can excite you, you know? Pretty like going to Hawaii for a little while, so hopefully we'll have a nice day. And that's all I have this week.
Get your executive session?
I know, I know. I would like to ask for an executive session during new business, which we're in now. I think we should, it'd be a very quick one.
Can you wait? You want to go now?
No, I can wait.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you.
I'd like a motion to appoint Robert Luckett to the planning board.
So, vote?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Luckett is a property owner who lives on Pine Street. He has a number of properties here in the village of Champlain. He has, he's a professor at Community College. He's been my neighbor across the street for a number of years. He's very active in maintaining his properties here in the village. He has three rental properties and two properties on Pine Street, one of which he is renovating, and he and his wife, Megan, will move in there and sell the other property that they have. He has shown an interest in the planning board, and with this approval, and Ms. Gisanda's approval, it will be the first time, I think, that we have a full planning board. I don't think I've ever remembered having a full planning board, but all the positions will be filled. So, all in favor of approving Mr. Luckett, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ananimos? Carries? Third idol, or third item under new business, I would like the board's approval to put the Dodge pickup with the plow out for bid as is. Would you like to comment on that?
I, I think it's time for it to go with the, it needs some major work in the backend and stuff, you know, brakes and hubs and stuff, and some bodywork.
Is it the frame?
The frames, there's nothing off the frame. The door on the driver's side, the floorboard is rotted out, you know, it's just, it's getting where it's gonna cost us more money to keep it going. Some of these are said to be good for a yard truck or a farm truck, but I think it's, it's time, it's only got 83,000 miles on it.
What year is that?
2001.
It's in tough shape. I think it would cost us more to maintain it than it would be to.
And you don't really need it, you can do without it, right?
Yes.
That was my concern, but it would all short and need a propeller, whatever.
Is that the truck that Woody uses down at the wastewater?
Correct.
Rotted station to station? So what, he'd use the new truck in the morning?
He drives a van.
The van?
Yeah. I had to take the van down to the road, it wasn't running, kept stalling out, and they probably put $1,500 worth of stuff on it, and it was all under warranty until May 16th, so it cost us a dime.
I guess we made a motion to put this Dodge pickup out to bid as is.
I'll make a motion to put the Dodge pickup out to bid as in, as is condition.
Have a second? Any other discussion?
We don't necessarily have to accept a bid, because it's ridiculous, it's just bid.
Nope.
Okay.
Subject to board approval. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Motion passes? Ananimos? The next item I have under new business goes along with correspondence number five in your bag, the preferred tank and tower incorporated. I think it's necessary that we clean the facility at the bottom of the water tank. I would imagine that it is quite deep there. The last time it was cleaned was?
2006, I believe.
Larry Sot.
Just before that was Mr. Weller's. It's less than 2004, I believe.
It's been probably eight, nine years, yeah.
Okay, eight or nine years. Larry Sot, and received three bids?
Three, yeah, three quotes, sir.
Okay. The note included in the correspondence, you have them?
No, I haven't, no.
Okay.
I think, weren't they talking with them before?
That was last month, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Larry received the lowest bid, preferred tank and tower. To clean, to clean the water tower, to written report, colored photographs, recommendations, and any other cost estimates that are involved in this water tank. I mean, it is our, it is our storage facility. You notice on the second page, all of the above to be completed in a substantial and workmanlike manner for the sum of $3,000. I would like to have this done under this year's budget.
Go ahead, motion?
Yes, I'd like a motion to go with preferred tank and tower.
I make a motion that we go with preferred tank and tower to have our tank cleaned and inspected for the sum of $3,000.
Go ahead, a second? Any other discussion? We have the money in the, the money that's, that's in our water fund under engineering. That's 1440.1, engineering services. We can use that funding. Our fiscal year ends May 30th, so.
How long's the tank gonna last for like this?
It's not out of service.
Not out of service?
No. It's all vacuumed and vacuumed off.
Interesting, okay.
Runs through screens and stuff.
And they're able, and they are able to get in there and take photographs?
They own the divers, diving out, everything's in chlorine.
Cool. Apparently it's been a long time since it's been done, because I remember in...
Seems like yesterday to me. That's why I was asking, don't we just do this?
Well, I, I think it's important, we, we cleaned the wells, we cleaned the wells last year, year before, put new pumps in there, it saved us as a good amount of money in electricity.
It's money well spent, I think that's good.
You know, it gives, I think it gives our consumers a better product to clean this on a regular basis, so.
What's the recommended schedule for cleaning, how often should they be done?
Annual.
Ah, okay.
Will they be able to get this done so that this can be paid for out of this budget?
As long as, yes, if this contract is good for nine days, they'll have the process started before. Larry can call them tomorrow with the last page of the correspondence, which is letter of intent, and we can get that, we can get this process started and get the, get it cleaned.
Is this the price that it would be if we did it annually, or is it just because this has been so long?
No. Once you see the other quotes, that's, that's, that's a good price.
No, I know it is, I'm just curious, is if this is because it's been so long, or if we do this regularly as we should, are we looking at the same expense?
No, because what they do, they send you a flat rate, and then it's up to so many inches, and for every inch after that, it's like $305. So if they gave you six inches with that, with that flat rate, it's $305 for every other, or if they're down timing, that's, that's all extra money. So when I asked, I wanted a flat rate, right across the board.
Right.
When buying with no depth?
No.
No.
If there's three inches, fine, if there's nine inches, it's the same price.
Right, okay.
Is that what the, he has in the contract, except as noted, is, is there a specific note?
What's that?
In the proposed contract, the, the first date, it's furnished through all labor, materials, equipment, insurance necessary to complete, except as noted. Are they referring to something specific, or is that?
No.
The work on the tank?
Yeah.
Cleaning and everything else that they need to do in the water?
That includes everything from start to finish.
Yeah, it's, except as noted, the following work on the 5,000 ton tank. So we're finishing everything with the tank, I guess?
Inspector.
Yeah, I think that's what it means, but.
Inspector tank, with, you know, to ensure compliance.
Kind of regulated by that.
Oh, any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisanda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Carey?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. This, we don't need a motion on it, I'd like to propose a special board meeting on Monday, May 23rd at 6:30 PM. That will be the final meeting of the year so that we can take care of any financial business that we need to take care of also. We as a board must vote on the re-leveying of unpaid water and wastewater bills at that meeting to, or so those bills can be added to the taxes, property taxes. We're waiting a couple days checking postmarks to make sure that the water and wastewater bills at the last reading are all in, that's going to be in at that point. So I would like to have a meeting on the 23rd. It should be a short meeting just to take care of any other financial issues that we need to address for the end of the year and to re-levee these water and wastewater bills. So, I need a motion to get to executive session.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, stop there. I'll be ready to act.